Must be something to do with the phone, I think. Yeah. Who is doing the invocation?
Good evening, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order and it's wonderful to look at, see all of you out there. Meeting is officially called to order and we will ask our police chaplain Jerry Ferguson to come up and give us the invocation.
Let's pray together. Our Heavenly Father, we again have an opportunity to acknowledge you as our God and we acknowledge our need for you as we gather to conduct the business of our town. Thank you for caring about the things we care about and for asking us to care about the things you care about. We give thanks to you for the wisdom you give us as we gather together. Your word says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you." Your word also says, "Plans fail for lack of counsel, but with many advisors they succeed." Thank you Heavenly Father for allowing us to celebrate Patriate Week as we remember those who lost their lives on September 11, 2001, and June 30, 2013. We also thank you for your protection of our first responders, our government servants, and all the volunteers who graciously serve our community. We acknowledge as a town, as a state, and as a nation, we are in the midst of electing leaders. We pray that the decisions that are made will be in the best interest of our community and pleasing to you. Your word says, "We who are strong ought to bear with the failings of the weak and not to please ourselves. Each of us should please our neighbors for their good to build them up." Heavenly Father, with your help, we make such a commitment and thank you for hearing our prayer. Amen.
Amen. I'm asking Council-elect Don Packard to come down and lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, please follow me as we pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all you. Now it's Diane's turn to do the roll call.
Mayor Skug is absent this evening. Vice Mayor Nye?
I am here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh-uh, Diane, thank you, Diane.
Just got a promotion.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm missing the mayor. I'm rushing around trying to do his job. And Mary, would you do me the honor of joining me down there for the proclamation?
Yes, sure.
Constitution Week, September the 17th through the 23rd of 2018. Whereas September 17th, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September the 17th through the 23rd is Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, hereby declare September the 17th through the 23rd, 2018 to be Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
Thank you, Diane. Ladies, I have a list of names, but there's not enough here. Why don't you come up and introduce everybody or one of you choose to come up and introduce? I can see right here, there's not enough names.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Machmer. I'm the Region of Yavapai Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. I'd like to introduce some of our honorary chapter regents and pass and tell you that we do have a website and we are here in Prescott Valley. We would like you, any of you ladies who can prove ancestry or patriotic service back to the Revolutionary War period, to please join us. We are a service organization and we promote patriotism, historic preservation, and education. I'd like to introduce Honorary Regent Dorothy Castanos, our Chapter Treasurer. We couldn't do without her, Debbie Lamb, Honorary Regent, Chapter Regent Sue Burke, my Vice Regent. Linda Shebeck, and our very newest member, Kathy Houchen. We're happy to be here and we hope that you, hope you take a look at the display case out into the Library of our Constitution Week. We have three of the things filled up there and it'll be there for the end of the month and there's things for children and everything, so thank you so much.
All right, right now I'm going to ask your group right over here and we're going to have Heidi get a picture of you. Ladies, before you go, I have a confession to make. I can never join your group. I'm only second generation American. And when I deal with this group and these ladies, I always think, "Thank goodness they liberated us." So I thank each one of you.
I always say, "Don't mess with the Daughters of the American Revolution because we are descended from rebels."
Diane, does anybody else want to say anything? You do not have to. Then I'll allow you to get back to your seats.
Thank you so much.
All right, our next proclamation is acknowledging Suicide Prevention Month. Do we have anyone here as if I didn't know? Diane, really quick before you read it. I know this gentleman, just met his wife. And then Diane will read.
Good evening. My name is John Shooterer. I'm a retired mental health and substance abuse counselor. My wife and I are what's called survivors of suicide. We lost our youngest son to suicide in 2001 and I'm also the chair, did I already say that? I'm the chairperson of the Yavapai County Suicide Prevention Coalition. This is my wife Barbara. She's a supporter, obviously, and this is Rabbi Adele Plotkin. I'm not sure where your congregation is, but I have, but she's also a big supporter. She's part of the Quad Cities Interfaith Council who has come to us as a coalition saying, "How can we help prevent suicide?" All of you've got a little green card, I think, I hope so, when you came in. It is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and we want everyone to be aware of the warning signs. I firmly believe that the more eyes and ears that we have on each other as a community and as a county, the safer we will be. One of the statistics I think you'll hear in the proclamation is that Yavapai County has the highest suicide rate per capita in the state of Arizona. That is a statistic that we're trying to change in cooperation, collaboration with organizations like Quad Cities Interfaith Council and particularly with Yavapai County Health Services Department, so.
Thank you so much. And now Diane, you're on.
Suicide Prevention Month, September 2018. Whereas in the United States, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death for people of ages with 44,965 suicide deaths in 2016 and on average, one person dies by suicide every 8.6 minutes. Men die by suicide 3.53 times more often than women and women attempt suicide 3 times more often than men and for every completed suicide, there are an estimated 25 attempted suicides. Each person's death by suicide intimately affects minimally six other people, making over 200,000 newly bereaved each year. And whereas in Arizona, 1,271 Arizonans died by suicide in 2016, approximately 7,600 friends and family members were changed forever by losing these people. In Arizona, an average of one person dies by suicide every seven hours. Whereas Yavapai County per capita suicide rate is the highest in Arizona, impacting both urban and rural communities. In 2017, at least 101 Yavapai County citizens ended their life by suicide in 2017 with 66.77% of the deaths involving the use of a firearm, 15.7% above the national average. In Yavapai County, approximately 1,950 people attempted to die by suicide in 2017 and whereas in 14 citizens of the Prescott Valley died by suicide in 2017, negatively impacting their family, friends, and community. Many of the people who died by suicide may not have received effective behavioral health services for many reasons, including the difficulty of accessing services by healthcare providers trained in the best practices to reduce suicide risk. Those who have lost a loved one to suicide and those who survived and attempted suicide need support and understanding as they grieve but too often are unable to receive treatment. And whereas the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Yavapai County is comprised of representatives of behavioral health organizations, law enforcement agencies, faith communities, health coalitions, and citizen advocates are all dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and suicide deaths and the pain of those affected by suicide deaths through providing resources, education, and support. Therefore, be it resolved that I Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Month and urge everyone to learn how they can help because suicide prevention is everyone's business.
Thank you, Diane. John and I intersect in other organizations in town and sadly for us, it wasn't a shock to hear how high our suicide rate is here. So it's preventable and I urge all of you to get educated on how to just do that. Do you have any final words, John?
Thank you to the City Council for issuing this proclamation. It's very important to us as a community and it honors my son's death as well, so it's really meaningful to me. The city of Prescott Valley has joined six other, or five other communities in the county with Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, Dewey, and Cottonwood and Sedona. So there were six others, five others, and so it is a community, a county-wide effort to bring awareness to this tragic, tragic problem. I have given the City Council pamphlets about what the coalition is all about. I'll leave some in the back for those of you who are interested. We would love to come out to your organizations, to your neighborhood, homeowners association, whatever, wherever, and come out and do a presentation on who's at risk, what the warning signs are, and what you can do to help keep a person safe. So I'll leave some of these in the back. My card is inside. Please contact me and we'll arrange those presentations for you with no problem. There's no charge. Be more than happy to travel anywhere in the county to do this. So thank you all so very much for your attention.
This is barely touched on, so I just want to make sure you understand. There are classes, just like we have first aid and CPR, there are classes to recognize and deal with suicide prevention when you see someone who might be a potential suicide. So this is something else you can look up and we do have information on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight. We appreciate it. All right, we have a lot going on here tonight. Did you want to get a picture, Heidi? Come on back. Yeah, we like to keep Heidi happy. She takes great pictures. All right, we're down to six scheduled announcements and presentations and now we have the PVPD Life Savings Award. Chad Huber, Matt Wilson, LPO Sheldon, and I'm sure, yes, here he comes to save the day.
That's what we're recognizing them for. So it is my privilege to honor three of our officers and if they can come forward with their families, if they so choose, Officer Matt Wilson, Officer Chad Huber, and Lead Police Officer Brian Sheldon are being recognized tonight for lifesaving. So my name is James Edelstein. I'm your Deputy Chief of Police. The lifesaving ribbon is awarded to recognize the actions of department personnel that result in the saving or preservation of human life that otherwise would have been lost without the employee's direct involvement. On the evening of April 23rd, 2018, Officers Matt Wilson, Chad Huber, and Lead Police Officer Brian Sheldon responded urgently to a possible drug overdose on Tanney Drive. Upon arrival, Officer Wilson was flagged down by the caller and quickly made his way into the residence with additional officers conducting a safety sweep. While assessing the scene, officers determined that the victim was not breathing and had a very slow pulse. Officers prepared Narcan for the victim and administered it. The victim responded with a deep breath then went unconscious again. Officer Wilson began chest compressions with Lead Police Officer Sheldon prepping another Narcan kit and that second kit was administered with additional chest compressions. Paramedics arrived and were able to stabilize the victim with an IV line and the actions of these officers certainly preserved the victim's life just long enough for medical personnel to arrive, establish an IV line, and allow him to be transported to the hospital. Without their quick actions, this would have been a tragic event. So if I can just make a quick comment and then I'll turn it over to the officers if they want to say anything or Vice Mayor. You know, opiates and drugs are definitely a problem here in Prescott Valley and everywhere and we were very fortunate to be one of the first departments in Yavapai County to issue and train our officers on the use of Narcan. This is not the first time we've been before council acknowledging the lifesaving actions of our officers who have been there to save the life of somebody here in Prescott Valley. So very proud of you. Thank you.
Now you saw me chatting with the officers, man a few words, so now he has to come up and say something.
Thank you.
I confess, I told him he could get away with that. Gentlemen, do you have anything you want to say besides "thank you"? No? Well, we do honor you. Words sometimes are cheap, but your actions save lives and that's what we're here about today. Mary, wouldn't you like to say something?
Well, as always, we have an amazing police department that are always on the front lines keeping us safe at night while we're sleeping and I appreciate each and every one of you as you're out there putting yourselves out there protecting us. God bless you always and your families who are right behind you. Thank you very much.
Can you tell Heidi has, I don't want to take a pic look, but I want to see if any other councilmen or women have anything they'd like to share. Michael, go ahead, Jody.
I want to say thank you to our officers and our families. We do have, as Councilmember Mallory said, a wonderful police department here and your quick action made the difference that day and you continue to make the difference every day that you're out there on the street. Thank you so very much and we support you.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my appreciation as well and I always think that our officers are well-trained and are ready to take on anything they find in the field and anymore, I look at it in the same vein as teachers, is that we depend on our officers to do much more than they were doing 10 years ago and we appreciate you taking that commitment, education, and saving lives, so we appreciate your efforts and congratulations.
You know, too often we turn on television and watch the news and we find a multitude of people second-guessing the police department and I'm very thankful that we don't have that issue in Prescott Valley and it's because of officers like you and like the gentlemen standing in the back, your entire department. We are very proud of all of you, so thank you very much.
Marty?
Yeah, every time we have one of these awards to be given out, it keeps going back to the training that our officers receive and how they implement it, okay? But I also want to give credit to the executive staff and the budgeting staff of our police department for having the foresight to see the future and get the Narcan so that we have it and make it a budget item and make sure that they had the money to pay for it and our officers are properly trained in the use of the Narcan. So that, along with all the other training that they receive, I think it's just a great effort by our police department and the training we provide them and the service that they give back to our community, so thank you very much.
I really didn't know I was going to do this, but some of their comments tells me I need to say this. You know what Facebook is like? It's pretty darn interesting. Well, two weeks ago, an individual was picking on all of you and I put it down, "Don't respond, don't respond, you can't respond." And then I thought, nuts to that. This is what I want to know about. I educated them and the people that responded, that agreed with me, overwhelmed the page that day. That's the piece I want you to know about. We always have the negative element, but those who appreciate you, respect you, took care of the day. And now I'm sure Heidi wants a picture.
Congratulations.
I don't know about you, but it's always an honor to get to officially say thank you. Let's move right on to be here and again, it's the PVPD promotions and I'll let the chief take it from here.
So while Evelyn gets up, and here she is, thank you. You're welcome to bring any family members with you. I just want to acknowledge that all of our officers, Evelyn and James, that their families are here with them tonight and that's a big piece of our police department. Our department's a family and I need to thank their family members for supporting them as well because without our families, we couldn't do what we do. So thanks to our families. Hi, Sarah. That'd be my wife. Evelyn has been around animals most of her life. She grew up on a large cattle ranch with horses, dogs, cats, cattle, chickens, and goats. Sometimes we see those in the animal control office as well. Currently, she owns a small ranch filled with rescue animals like dogs, horses, chickens, and even a pot-bellied pig. Throughout her career, she's always worked with animals. Evelyn's past five-plus years has been devoted to working in the animal field. She's worked as a vet assistant at local animal hospital as well as working for the Yavapai Humane Society as the lead behaviorist and adoption specialist for three years. In May of 2016, Evelyn was hired on with us as an animal control officer. She's now completed two years of training certifying her as a nationally recognized animal control officer and her certification includes specialized training as an animal cruelty investigator. This certification places Evelyn as one of a handful of animal cruelty investigators in northern Arizona. She also recently completed training in Durango, Colorado, as a large animal equine and livestock officer and cruelty investigator. Evelyn's received multiple commendations from the Prescott Valley Police Department. An example of her commendation includes her work with Yavapai County Juvenile Detention School. Using Figgy, her certified therapy dog, she teaches a program called Safety Around Dogs to children in juvenile detention. In August 2018, Evelyn competed for the position and was selected to become our new animal control supervisor and so we are here to celebrate that promotion tonight. Congratulations.
I would love it if you'd just share one of your experiences because I happen to know they're pretty darn interesting.
I would probably say most recently was our four horses who escaped from Coyote Springs. They had escaped from a private ranch on Coyote Springs and somehow made their way all the way across 89A Highway, also across 89, 89 Highway. We called in the fire department, we called in DPS, and of course, our fellow officers as well, shut down the entire highway and surprisingly enough, actually, one of our police officers helped us wrangle it into ranchland and, which was probably about a 30-acre ranch. So once we got him in there, we thought, now we got to find him again and try to get him back home. So we networked with a couple of the Facebook sites and found the owners and were able to wrangle them all up and reunite them with their owners safely. Nobody was hurt, so thank you.
I think it's only fair that you at least introduce your family and your support, your crew. I will not ask you to speak unless you choose.
So this is my mom Bee. This is my mom Bee, who is my biggest fan. And my son Paul and my godchild Lily, my niece, and they've been behind me through the whole thing and they're amazing, so I really have a lot of appreciation for their support.
I just want to thank you, Mom, and I thank you for sharing your mom with us. We're so excited because she has exploits. Would you say that's fair? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, he's hiding. Okay, he's hiding. We have a source appreciation for Bill Kopey, and he's hiding around the corner. Come up here, Bill. Oh, I'm sorry. Change, go ahead. I'm sorry, there's two names on there. I can read, but I can't see.
I forgot my glasses, too. So we are also here to recognize the promotion of James Risinger from Animal Control Supervisor to Support Services Division Supervisor. James and wife Amanda have been married for 16 years. They have three children, Sierra, Cheyenne, and Jayden. James began his career in law enforcement with Phoenix Police Department, graduating from the Arizona Law Enforcement Academy in March 2004. In 2005, James transferred to Maricopa County Animal Care and Control, where he investigated animal cruelty cases. James was promoted to the position of Corporal and Field Training Officer. In 2007, he returned to Phoenix Police as an officer assigned to Central Phoenix in the Transit Unit investigating crimes that occurred on the transit system. During his tenure in that unit, James assisted in helps training the department canine bomb dogs and implemented one of the largest crime prevention programs titled Surface Transit Top Offender Program. James designed and wrote the program, which assesses problem individuals on the different transit systems, currently tracking over 1,300-plus different individuals. Due to the success of the program, other Phoenix Department and agencies have continued to use it. In May 2017, Prescott Valley Police hired James as our Animal Control Supervisor. James accomplished several projects while assigned in that position. Examples of those projects include developing a field training manual for new animal control officers and a procedure manual. He also made changes to the town's animal laws and dog licensing procedures, created an educational coloring booklet used in our elementary schools, and renegotiated a contract with the Yavapai County Humane Society. Since working with Prescott Valley Police, James has received a number of commendations. In August of this year, James was selected as the new Support Services Supervisor. He will be overseeing our Support Services staff of five community of five community services officers. We're delighted to have James as a member of our department. Congratulations.
Okay. Before we go to the council, we're going to let you come defend yourself.
I just want to thank my family, my wife and my children. Throughout my career, they've always been the people that are behind me that have supported me. But I also want to thank the department, the council, that have also supported me in different, whether it's down in Phoenix and up here. I've had a great opportunity to work with great people at the animal control. But what has also been an excellent thing is the community service officers that I get to currently work with now. That is just a wonderful thing. So I appreciate the opportunity the department has given me. Thank you.
James is just another example why this is an extraordinarily town to feel safe in. I'm sure the council has some remarks.
Yeah. Congratulations to James and Evelyn. Once again, one of the things that our police department does and does very well is promote from within. And that's important, because our beginning officers know that if they work hard and they do the proper training and they put in the hours and the work, that there is a chance for them to rise within the department. And these, I mean, I remember, I mean, it wasn't that long ago that both of you came onto the department. So it's not always a time issue that you get promoted. And the two of you have worked very well with the, with our department. And it's showing now that the fact that you're getting your promotion. So congratulations, and we expect to see you up here several times for many reasons. Thank you.
As Marty indicated, it has been a short time that you've been here. But since you've been here, we've all seen the fruits of your labor. So you've done a good job. You certainly have the background. And we do appreciate everything you've done for us. And I congratulate you on your promotion. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, James. I know you've been here, as we say, a short time. It just seemed like a couple of months ago. And I do remember, oh my God, I think it was a couple of months, no. But I've seen you at our national night out, I think at Stone Ridge. And you have a great background, and you hit the, you know, the street running with your first assignment. And now already, you're a rising star and our employee in our community. And we appreciate your willingness to step up and do that. And we're looking forward to your leadership and look forward to seeing you many, many more times. Congratulations.
I wish congratulations to you, James and Evelyn, as well. And I have a question. Evelyn, do you think he'll find enough stuff to put in that office now that, so it's not all echoey? Some dogs, right. I think, I think he's probably up to it, yes. Congratulations.
James, welcome again. But this time, a welcome to the family long term. Okay, it's official. I think I was nervous before, because Mr. Kopey was lurking around the corner. And I know he doesn't want us to do this. See, he's shaking his head. And I think I was worried he'd flee on us. Sorry, Bill, come on up. Come on down. And now the room will empty. And Bill is not to take it personally.
It's called a walking ovation.
Bill, this is the first time you've emptied a room before you brought out your PowerPoint.
All right. Are you, are you ready, Bill? Can you handle it? We're going to set Larry loose.
Bill, instead of a very long-prepared eulogy, if you will, I certainly didn't prepare that. All I do want to say is that it's been a pleasure, and we appreciate it. And I know that Mike Flannery has something that he wants to say. If somebody would take the microphone up to Mike. But it's, it's been a great run.
Why don't you give him a hard time while we do that?
Well, first of all, good evening, Mayor, or Vice Mayor and Council. I want to, I want to compliment you all on the ceremony you had here for the last two days. That was just outstanding. You all should be proud of that, so. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, anybody that had anything to do with it. It was outstanding. I was attacked by some people in the parking lot last night and asked to come in and say some words about this guy. And I just had to find out how to pronounce his name back up there, so. I'm not sure. I'm not sure who he is. He's been here a couple of years. Anyway, Bill, I guess, has been here since, well, I, we were, were we over, we were over in the community center then, weren't we?
We were not here. We were, no, we weren't in the community.
It seems like a long time. Anyway, I've come to know, know Bill as, as the finance manager for the town and trusted him in that role, foolishly as I were. And, and, and that, that trust has gone over to, we have a very strong friendship. And I've admired him for everything he's done for the town. And I kind of think that maybe you have it backwards, though, Bill. I think maybe you should have gone from Buckeye to Prescott Valley.
Here, here.
Backwards is always. Anyway, I, I, our loss is their gain. They're, they're going to gain something very, very special, so. I hope you set your car so that it knows the return route. Because mine doesn't. Anyway, good luck in the future, and we, we're going to miss you something else. Thank you.
No, you don't get away that easy.
No. Uh, Bill? Yeah, we're not done. Line up and come up, people, while, while I give him a hard time. Bill, you and I never yelled at one another. What's wrong with our relationship? We never got on the bad side of each other. But maybe some of these people did. So get ready. You decide who comes up.
You know, it was really, really hard when Bill told us that he was going to be leaving. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Katie Pell. I'm the finance manager. I've worked with Bill for four years now, and we're, we're losing an absolutely wonderful member of our staff and a great mentor. And just appreciate all the, all the time that he's given to help guide all of us. And thank you.
I'm going to have to be quick with this, because no one wants to see the biggest guy in town cry. Bill, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the last four years. Words can't describe what you've done for me, my division, and made me who I am. Should be that. I absolutely love you.
I'm Casey Danner. I'm the IT manager for the town. I've had the pleasure of knowing Bill for 17 years, 16 and a half years. I was on the original panel that interviewed Bill. And I, I knew, I, I knew I liked Bill from the start. And, you know, I, my wife calls me a heartless pig because I rarely ever show emotion, but. This is the time. No, I, I told Bill already today, I kind of, I shared a little bit with him. Bill's the best boss I ever had. He's taught me more about management than I could ever learn from any book or any class or anything like that. And beyond that, he's, he's been a good friend and a treasured friend. And he will always be that. And I wish him the very, very best. Prescott Valley's losing someone very special, but Buckeye is gaining someone very special.
I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to talk, so I didn't prepare anything, but, um. Yeah, I do. Anyway, I'm Latoya. I'm the admin supervisor for Management Services. And I've been lucky to only know Bill, or not even known Bill, but only worked with Bill for a year, so. I haven't had a track record like the rest of them. But it's been a really good year and few months. And I've learned a lot, and I, it's been good. I've learned a lot from you. And, you know, my pot, my optimism kind of works with his pessimistic view on some things. So I think it, I think our, it worked. So I'm going to miss you, and it was really good working with you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
No, Bill. Not too close.
Well, Bill, this is, it's really hard to see you go. I'm going to miss you.
That's most respect I've ever seen.
Sometimes, Larry, yeah. Anyway, you're an amazing person. And you've been an amazing employee here. You have taken this town to just amazing limits. Conquered a lot of situations. And, yeah, you know, Buckeye is really getting a gem. I'm sorry to see you go.
I'll get the rest of it. If I wait, I won't get it out. Bill, do you remember what it was like in our meetings in the downturn of the economy? I want to thank you. I want to thank you for giving me confidence. I want to thank you for instructing me so I was comfortable how I voted. I want to thank you for steadying the ship financially throughout that long scary, too many years. And we're privileged. And you'll always, always be in our hearts. And if I don't see you again, I'll get you somewhere.
Bill, I want to thank you for the, all of the awards that you brought here. Oh, my gosh. It was, it's been fantastic. It's like year after year, we'd get all these awards. And I knew that you were behind that. Of course, you always are really humble. Like, oh, I have really good staff. And, and, and you do. I agree. I agree. You know, and like Casey, I liked you from the start, too, back in the day when I met you. And, you know, I just kind of was wondering, though, if Casey and Latoya actually taught you how to dance before you're leaving? No? No? Yeah, okay. All righty.
Wow, he's seeing a bunch of nose up here.
Bunch of nose? He's like doing that whole neck thing there, yeah. But I, I just really appreciate what you have done, not only for the town, but your leadership with staff here and certainly at the regional level, too. Thank you.
I don't think I've ever seen Bill squirm like he's squirming this afternoon.
He always did when he had to get up and run.
I see. No, no. I think he's always been, he, he looks like a Clark Kent to me. You know, he's always cool, calm, collective. And, you know, I think ever since I've been here, we heard the, the information you had to impart relative to financial status of our community. And obviously, you knew what you're talking about, because we're doing very well in that regard. So we understand, and I was shocked, you know, when I heard that you were leaving, but understand, you know, the opportunities that are before you still to share the wealth, so to speak. So we congratulate you. We'll miss you, and keep on keeping on.
Bill, I've always given you a hard time about your PowerPoint presentations. I meant every word of it. But I'm, but I'm truly going to miss them. And I'm going to miss you. So good luck.
Once again, we have somebody who has brought the town through the economic crisis that we dealt with, you know, from 2006 to 2009. And if this was a ship, Bill's the one that had his hand on the oar and was controlling us and guiding us. And the, the nice thing, I mean, these statistics have come out before, but just to emphasize it, during the recession, the town never had to lay anybody off. All the services were constantly provided that was needed, okay? We might have, you know, our staff might have had to work a little harder and do a little extra, but they were there. And we were able to manage a budget. You know, when you have a budget that drops from $111 to $58 million a year, that's, that's a lot of working around and being able to get the services done. And Bill was the person that led us through it. So you're going to be, you're going to be missed very much. But the, the other side of it is the fact that you have such a great team working for you, and you have trained them well. So the town is still going to be in good financial hands, okay? You saw to that, and we thank you for that. So congratulations and good luck in your future. And you will be sorely missed. Thank you.
All right. To balance it all out, everything we said is true. It's true. But you did have a little help sitting back here. Didn't you two argue from time to time? You're never All right, I'm trying to end this on a light note. We can't have him going out of here. We want to honor you. And of course, there's so many ways we can do it. We wanna honor you and of course, there's so many ways we can do it, so we just have this little, small gift, and it better show up on that desk down there.
It will.
You gotta read it. He's got his glasses on.
I got my, put my glasses on. No, I'm not gonna read it out loud, I'll never make it through it.
I won't read it.
I appreciate it.
Prescott Valley and appreciation to William Copie, of fifteen years of service displaying exemplary professional ethics and your outstanding example to your fellow employees. We wish you all the best going forward. Two thousand three to twenty eighteen, you have served us amazingly well and took us to a very high level. Thank you.
See, Bill, it wasn't that bad.
I just have to say real quick before I lose it here, uh, but I do wanna thank Council, great group of Council to work with, even when Mike Flannery was on Council. You know, there, there might have been one exception during a certain time period when it was a little bit difficult-
We overcame it.
But we overcame that, that period of time, but, you know, it's been a pleasure and, again, I gotta give the credit to my staff. I got a great group of people. Larry has been a great boss, so, thank you.
He didn't wanna go through it. I think he planned to be on vacation. All right, a less emotional item, D Chamber of Commerce. Let's go for it.
Hey, Town Council in town of Prescott Valley. My name's Brady, I work for the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce. As we know, Prescott Valley is exploding. It is probably the largest town in Arizona, if I was guessing, that's not like a real statistic. Well, there's an incredible amount of opportunity in business and I have the privilege of introducing a couple of new businesses into the Prescott Valley area. First, I would like to introduce Joe and Jackie with Jack's Furniture Shack.
Hi, my name is Joe and I am the Delivery Driver for Jack's Furniture Shack, and this is my spouse Jackie, she is Jack, and, uh, we're very happy to be in the town of Prescott. Uh, we've been here, Prescott Valley, I'm sorry. Sorry. Um, we did, about a year ago, and we're very happy to open up our business. We've almost been in the furniture business for close to ten years, and, uh, we're very happy to open up our small location on Highway sixty-nine. Uh, we're currently open and we're gonna have our grand opening on October the nineteenth, between one and two, that's a Friday, where we'll be having free drinks, uh, free, uh, food, um, and, uh, we'd hope that any and all of you can come and join us and see what we have to offer.
Thank you.
You don't know this, but here's my favorite word, favorite four-letter word, free.
Free. Um, and so, we also have, um, an incredible need for wellness in Prescott Valley with this many people. People get like bumps and scrapes and they need treated. We have Synergy Wellness Center. Um, I'd like to introduce Emiliano.
Welcome. Thank you, everybody. Um, my name is Emiliano Ramos, I'm a Brand Manager for Synergy Wellness Center. We have just recently, in the middle of June, opened a second office here in Prescott Valley. Our original office was in Prescott, Arizona, and we've had that business there for eleven years now. We were lucky enough to win the Da- the Daily Courier's Reader's Choice Award for Best Chiropractor in Prescott last year, and, uh, we are a block north of the intersection of Robert and Spouse here in Prescott Valley. We have, uh, two amazing acupuncturists, two amazing chiropractors, and seven massage therapists that work out of that office. Um, so, if you ever have a need or your loved ones have a need, we really love taking care of people and all the people that we have working for us really have a great heart and are really good at what they do, so come check us out. Thank you. Our, our phone number to the Prescott Valley office is nine-two-eight-two-seven-seven-eight-seven-one-five, and we also have a website, you can book online, and, uh, yeah, thank you.
We need to get Neil Wadsworth up here now, but I wanna reassure you, Neil isn't leaving, so we don't have to get all emotional. Are we ready?
Neil, we appreciate your twenty years, it's hard to believe that it's been twenty years, uh, working for the town of Prescott Valley, and just to remind everybody, Neil and his department have been entrusted with arguably the most important service that this community, uh, is given by the mayor and council, and that's providing water and wastewater services. That's huge, and, and, and many people don't really realize what all is involved with that. And Neil, you've done a fantastic job coming onboard, uh, with, uh, a wastewater treatment plant that needed some, uh, love and care, and in addition to that, growing a water delivery system, uh, that really, uh, when we took over Shamrock Water Company, really needed a whole lot of help, and so you have grown that to an outstanding municipal, uh, water and wastewater delivery system, uh, despite some of the many challenges. You've done it with a smile on your face, a sense of urgency when appropriate, and you have done a, a great job, so I, I really, truly appreciate working with you and, uh, thank you very much.
Do any of you back there wanna come up and make him miserable? You're welcome. It's that kind of night. Yeah. Uh, Neil, having the longest tenure here, after the, after our wonderful mayor, um, it hasn't always been easy. It hasn't always been easy for your department because you always needed more money than we could give you. But I want, I want to applaud you, particularly for the moments that were difficult. Uh, you always made me feel confident, even when there were issues, and that's a very comforting thing when I have to get up and represent our citizens. So, I want all those citizens to know, Neil, you not only are competent, you are stalwart when there's bumps in the road, and I'll let you defend yourself after a while. Mary?
Well, Neil, you have helped me a lot through the last seven years, understanding just the basics of this water structure and how it works and, uh, and as Larry has said many times, I have heard him say, that water is the most important in the community, and you keep us safe as you monitor that department, and, uh, we appreciate that. We appreciate you and, uh, we look forward to another twenty years. I'm holding you, I'm holding you to that, all right?
Uh-oh, didn't look like he's buying it. I don't think he bought it, but, you know-
That's all right.
Well, I, I did wanna say that, uh, you have done a great job and as Larry indicated, probably is the greatest resource we have that we can provide our community is water, and, uh, you know, I'd look at you as a water czar, so you're gonna have to be here another twenty years whether you like it or not. But we do appreciate, uh, I think, uh, the way in which you've built and provided the infrastructure for our community. You've never, uh, I don't think, uh, have let us down, in fact, we're, I think, the last time we talked about twelve years ahead of, uh, you know, the curve in terms of what's required for our community in the future, so we appreciate, uh, your professionalism and hopefully you will be here a little longer to see us grow and prosper, so congratulations and thank you for the twenty years.
Neil, I remember the day that you took me out to do the tour, and, you know, we have so many, we have different types of water here and we are, and I was glad I had my boots on that day, 'cause I remember saying, "What is that smell?" And, uh, yeah, you kindly educated me and I really appreciated that, and you've done a great job. You know, also, when I think about different infrastructure that we have to have in order to have wastewater treatment and to make sure that clean water comes out of our tap for our citizens and just, it's a big deal. It's quite a responsibility, and I want you to know I appreciate it. Thank you, Neil.
Well, a couple of things, Neil. First of all, I'm grateful that we have someone of your caliber doing the job that you're doing. Uh, secondly, I do appreciate the fact that you're thinking ahead, far enough ahead that you can plan for the things that we're gonna need in the future, you know, we're, we're keenly aware of the fact that you do that planning, and that makes it easy for us to do our job. Um, I'm also grateful that I could learn about the sewer plant through pictures. I never had to take the tour to understand what a sewer plant is, and I question, everybody else had to take that tour, but, thank you.
And there's no PowerPoint, Rick. I must be a glutton for punishment because I took the tour of the water plant twice. Once after lunch, big mistake. Anyway, uh, the, the thing that impresses me most about you, Neil, is the fact that you just don't get overly excited. You take everything in stride, you, taking the problem or situation or issue or, uh, look ahead to what we need and, you know, you get all the facts, you get all the figures, and you go ahead and we get it done, and, uh, the collaboration and friend, and friendship that we have with, well, it's CH2M Hill, but they just changed their name, I forget what the new name is, but that's secondary. Uh, anyway, the relationship that you have with them and the cooperation that you have with them to keep our water flowing and our sewer system working in this town is great, and as they said, you know, looking to the future and planning for that, you know, we have the four wells coming in over the next year or so, and, uh, that's important, and, uh, you've also got a great staff that, of course, are under your direction and your training, so, uh, thank you again, and twenty years, it's a, it's a good start. Thank you.
We're almost done, Neil, and then you can talk. Oh, I'm gonna make this comment current. We have a vicious hurricane hitting the Carolinas. If I were on a ship on that shoreline, I'd want you to be my captain, because you however have always had a steady hand and a calm head. Now, it's your turn to get even.
I, I just wanna say thank you, I, I really appreciate all the, the kind words and everything. Um, but actually, you know, you guys have heard it over and over again tonight already. You know, we have great people working for this organization, it's a great place to work, um, the staff, all the teamwork and camaraderie that we have, everybody works well together, it's, it's just a fabulous place to work, and I'm glad I've been able to spend my last twenty years here, and I do hope to spend some more time, so if you start crying right now, I'm gonna think you're gonna want me to leave and, you know. But, uh, no, I, I do appreciate, and I appreciate all the support that I've received from, uh, the Council and from, from Larry and, and like I said again, um, the staff and, and all the people that work with me, um, it's just been great.
I hope this helps you feel highly valued, even though there was some teasing in there. So, Neil, we'd like to present to you an appreciation to Neil Wadsworth for twenty years of outstanding and dedicated service to the town of Prescott Valley. And, this says on the front, Neil, it has your name, so it's legal, a four-hundred-dollar gift plus twenty percent to cover taxes to be included in your paycheck. So, there's the real honey in this deal.
Thank you.
We're down to eight. Council, Comments and Communications, Jody, would you come down? And while you're coming down, our Town Manager has something to say.
I would like to ask Katie Pell to come down, uh, because I would like to, uh, introduce her, uh, to Vice Mayor and Council as your new Management Services Director. Uh, the, the comment, uh, that goes along with that is that our succession planning, uh, is working extremely well, and Bill snuck out that rat before, uh, I could have him come down and describe what he has described to me, and that is that Katie is more prepared to take on this task, this job, than he was when he came to work here fifteen years ago, and he feels extremely confident and comfortable, uh, that Katie is prepared, Katie is ready, and we very much look forward, uh, to having Katie Pell as our new Administrative Services Director.
Bravo, Katie. Warmest welcomes. You've already been in the family, and we are so glad you're gonna stay in our family, so I'm sure you have a few words you wish to share, hopefully.
I do, I just wanna say thank you so very much, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't be as prepared as I am today if I hadn't had the guidance of Bill over the last four years. He really furthered my career in so many ways. Um, he was always, like I said, a great mentor and always took the time to help me understand certain things or show them to me, so I was able to, um, get to the place that he felt I needed to be, to be here today, so thank you all.
Just let me say, wholeheartedly, we're still in our comfort zone, and that's a great compliment to you, and I hope you know how deeply and sincerely it's meant. Okay, Ms. Jody, um, you took a well-deserved little trip last week, and, yeah, and what I wanna do is I wanna thank and honor Jody for all the tremendous work she did for the fortieth anniversary celebrations, all of the businesses that she convinced that they wanted to be a part of, all of the hours, probably some sleepless times, and I just wanna honor you and thank you, and it's not over.
It's not over, and I thank you, we have a great team on the fortieth anniversary, oh, my gosh, you know, we have Gold Fever Days, that'll be on Saturday, October sixth, two thousand eighteen, from ten to seven, down at Fane Park, certainly, and that's at twenty, twenty-two zero zero North Fifth Street, Prescott Valley, Arizona. It is a, again, your favorite word, free, family event. I think that's gonna be a lot of fun, and be able to find information on the website, pvaz.net, or you can call the Parks and Rec, and that would be nine-two-eight-seven-five-nine-three-zero-nine-zero. Again, that's Gold Fever Days will be coming up. Certainly, we're finishing up with our Patriot Week this week, wonderful, we have wonderful family here in Prescott Valley, wonderful events, and just continue to enjoy the history that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Well, I'm so glad that Marty volunteered to read the agenda- Well, I'm so glad that Marty volunteered to read the consent agenda because I am out of breath. So thank you. Take it away, Marty.
Sure. Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that team will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. A, we have 26 of them, so it's gonna be a little bit. Okay. A, approving the July 26th and August 8th, 2018 Council Minutes. B, approving a Series 12 liquor license for Freedom Station located at 2992 North Park Avenue, Suite A, David L. Albers' applicant. C, approving a special event liquor license for the Truman-Clinton Dinner Party to consume alcoholic beverages at the event spot during their party to be held on Saturday, September 29th, 2018. D, approving the routine destruction of records that have reached the end of their life cycle. E, accounts payable. F, quarterly sales tax report. G, approving Mayor Harvey Skug's absence from the town from September 8th, 2018 through September 28th, 2018. H, approving the fiscal year 2018-19 agreement with Arizona Crisis Team Incorporated. I, approving the fiscal year 2018-19 agreement with Prevent Child Abuse. J, approving change order number three to the construction contract with Caruso Construction for the Prescott Valley Police Department Building. K, approving the purchase of Mountain Valley Park Fourplex scoreboards from Daktronics via the Mohave Cooperative Purchase Agreement in an amount of $33,106.06. L, authorizing the mayor to sign the GOHS contract, that's the highway safety. Yeah, okay. Contract 2019-405H-016 in the amount of $9,653 for pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement overtime, related materials and supplies, professional and outside services overtime. M, authorizing the mayor to sign the GOHS contract 2019-AL-023 in the amount of $28,000 for DUI impaired overtime, related materials and supplies and overtime. N, authorizing the mayor to sign GOHS contract 2019-PTS-04 in the amount of $25,000 for traffic enforcement overtime, related materials and supplies. O, approving the law enforcement Canine Fund Grant Agreement, accepting the grant award in the amount of $7,436 for advanced training seminars for the canine unit and pet insurance for current and retired service dogs. P, approving the expenditure of $32,353.03 for 10 patrol tablets utilizing PCS Mobile, NIPA vendor. Q, approving the purchase of ammunition from San Diego Police Equipment Company, Incorporated, in the amount of $33,100 utilizing State Contract Number ADSPO14-067867. R, approving change order number two to the contract for the annual chip seal program fiscal year 1819 with Earth Resources Corporation in the amount of $26,197.84. S, awarding the purchase of hot melt crack seal materials for the fiscal year 2018-19 to Craft Co., Incorporated, in total purchase amount of $65,161.50. T, awarding the purchase of a L261-1994 John Deere 544G loader from Arizona Department of Transportation through the State of Arizona Surplus Property Program in the total amount of $31,000 for Public Works. U, approving amendment number one to the Professional Services Agreement with Southwest Groundwater Consultants in the amount of $159,255 for the Win Song Well Project. But I lost it. B, approving amendment number one to the Professional Services Agreement with Southwest Groundwater Consultants in the amount of $58,520 to add cleaning and well modification to the contract for the Long Shot Well Project and approval of the associated budget adjustments. W, approving a Professional Services Agreement with Southwest Groundwater Consultants in the amount of $131,065 for new water production wells. X, approving the purchase of the utility tractor for Parks and Recreation totaling Y, approving the purchase of playground equipment from Play It Safe Playgrounds, Option 4C, via Mohave Contract Number 14X-PLY-0220, Quote Number 6633, in the amount of $99,984.93 for George Anderson Park. Z, approving the award of the contract for the Mountain Valley Park Parking Lot Rehabilitation Project to Regional Pavement Maintenance under the Mohave Contract Number 14Y-RPMA-0317 for the contract amount $60,487.86. I'm done.
And thank you, Marty. Before I ask the appropriate question here, I wanna explain to our citizens here and our viewers at home, it is an extraordinarily long Consent Agenda item, but at previous work-study meetings, sorry, that's why you read, just a moment. We agreed to move as much as possible to the Consent Agenda because we had studied and studied and studied and we didn't wanna be here till midnight. That's my input. So, the obvious question is, does anyone wish to remove an item for additional discussion? If no, I'd appreciate a motion and a second.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve all items on the Consent Agenda.
And I will second that.
Thank you.
That passes unanimously, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Now it's 10 on our agenda. New business for review, comment, and/or possible action. A, is consideration of reappointing Joshua Solikos to the Building Board of Appeals and I've asked Mr. Anderson, actually Councilman Anderson, to handle that for me.
Thank you. On July 31st, 2018, Joshua Solikos' term on the Building Board of Appeals will come due for renewal, actually came due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Joshua's first, was first appointed to a partial term on this board on August 12th, 2010, and this reappointment will be his fifth consecutive term. Vice Mayor and I, myself and Councilmember Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Joshua Solikos for a term with a renewal date of July 31st, 2020.
Thank you. I don't think he's here. If I'm wrong, please go ahead and embarrass me and come right on up here. All right, then, we'll accept a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion. Motion to reappoint Joshua Solikos to the Building Board of Appeals to a term with a renewal date of July 31st, 2020, by electronic vote.
I'll second that.
You?
That passes unanimously, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to item B under new business. Consideration of authorizing Mayor to sign Resolution Number 2065, setting forth the official returns of the August 28th, 2018 primary election. I can't, I can't speak for the rest of you, but I found these documents fascinating. I hope that some of us, either now or later, takes time because, number one, it tells us which districts our voters live in and it actually go out to the polls. And I found it very, very valuable reading. Is there any questions or discussions or motions?
Madam Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize the mayor in his absence to Vice Mayor to sign Resolution 2065, setting forth the official returns of the August 28th, 2018 primary election.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Diane.
That passes unanimously, Vice Mayor.
Oh, that's a relief. Literally. Item C, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2017, adopting and approving a final development plan plat, FDP 18-011, for Granville Unit 12. And I thank you for sticking it out. I won't embarrass him, call his name.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a final plan for Granville Unit 12 for 115 additional lots, bringing the total to about 2,500 of the approved 3,400 lots and staff recommends approval and plans reviewed by Public Works. With that, Joe Contidino is here. I'd like to have him come up and say a few words and see if he has any questions.
Vice Mayor and Council, my name's Joe Contidino. I've been the developer of Granville for all these years and I decided I needed to come every now and then as we record these plats so that you can see who we are and what we're doing. Before I say anything about that, I thought with Neil being here 20 years, I could say something, but I didn't wanna get up when he was here. I'd probably give him a heart attack if he thought I was gonna say something about him. But we've worked with Neil for 20, 18 years that we've been gone and we, I don't really know how many miles of pipe, water and sewer pipe we've installed, 20, 30, 40, 50 miles of pipe. And we've had, we've dealt with Neil almost daily and, and you might guess, things don't always go where they planned. And when you got people involved, things get fouled up every now and then. But I'd have to say, whenever those situations occur, we've been able to get together and there's no screaming and yelling and we figure out what the problem is, we fix it and move on. There's not much else you can do. And he's been, he's just been really wonderful to work with. I really appreciate him and the whole town staff from Larry and Richard. We, we really have a partnership. We're all working toward the same thing. We're trying to create a, a community that everybody's proud of and so far, we're, we can almost see the light at the end of the tunnel, but I'm really proud of what we've done and the things we've got planned in finishing up the community so that when it's all done, everybody will be proud of what's going on. We're, we're here with this Unit 12 tonight, which you see highlighted on the plat map. There's actually Unit 11 is just north of it and it, it's, it extends all the way to Glassford Hill and Tuscany. That plat will be coming within the next 90 days. The improvements are being done on all of it. We're getting ready, well, we're installing gas lines in Unit 12 right now. And we should, we're planning to have the streets black by the middle of December, including Tuscany from Glassford Hill all the way down to Santa Fe Loop Road. We'll finally have that paved. They're still putting some improvements in the ground right now. There's a gas line that has to go in, but that'll be all done by the middle of December. And then, long about, somewhere about March, we should finish all the lots south or north of Unit 12. There's another 100, 200 lots, 250 lots, south or north of Unit 12 that'll be done. What's happened is that we, I think we finished our final plat in Unit 10 last November and we did, we had 400 lots in that plat. Those, it was broken into three little plats, but we had 400 lots. And as of today, 100 of those homes are occupied with new homeowners. There's another 150 under construction and we've got only about 100 lots left, so we've really been pushing hard to get more lots. We, as you plan these things, you plan them so far in the future, you never know how the market's gonna turn out, but we only planned about 100 lots of the 400 of larger products and we had 300 lots of the smaller ones. Well, guess what sells now? We sold, we sold all the big lots. We don't have one left. We got a couple of specs, but there's nothing to start. Everything, all of our large lots in Unit 10 are started and Unit 12 is all large lots. So we, we hope to get our plat recorded, get our certificate of shared water supply, a real estate report and be selling long about the middle of December. We've been, we've been on a program of closing one house a day for the last probably five months. We don't get five a week, but most weeks we get five. And we are seeing customers coming from 22 states last year. They're not, they're not coming from just one concentrated area. About 50% of them come from Prescott and Prescott Valley, but even those people are from somewhere else. They, they spend some time here, get comfortable and then buy a house. We track where their check is from, what bank, what city the check is from. That's what we've used. So it's, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. It's, it's just encouraging seeing the town grow with all the, the people, the opportunities, the growth in the town, new businesses and it's, it's really satisfying to me to see this all the way through and, and we are engineering the next phase, the west side of Tuscany, all the way down to the Santa Fe Loop Road and that ends on Lot 3199. So we've got another 201 lots to go and Richard's always told me he wanted 3,400, not 32, not 3,390. So I, I think we're gonna, we're gonna get our 3,400. If you have any questions, thank you.
Well, bravo. We will let people ask you questions. I've done this before, but I've never felt it more important than we do it now. Number one, thank you for that report. Thank you for the information because we have people asking us those questions. Now if we paid attention, we have answers. But more than anything, I wanna thank you for your wise head, your good planning and if people don't know it, Mr. Contidino is the only developer that survived in this area through the downturn of the economy. And I always wanna honor you for that because other developers, developers just didn't have the wisdom you had. And you, you have helped create a master plan community that was very much wanted. I myself want to humbly again thank you for sticking it out and for creating that area for the families that so badly. And I'll ask the first question and then I'll ask everybody else have their turn. How are you managing with all the issues with workforce?
We just manage it week to week. It's, it's never, it's never, any one trade is behind. It's never, any one trade is behind. One week it could be the plumbers, two weeks later it's the electricians. One that we've had a probably the most serious problem with, we've been on a, five starts a week since the beginning of the year. We've started five houses every week. And our framers have only been framing four a week. So you might, you know, you do the math, and eventually you've got a lot of floors poured and no framers.
Yes.
And that's where we are today. We have 43 floors poured, and just this week, they've committed, they're bringing in, we have five framing crews now, and they've committed to bring five more in and get caught up. And they said in 30 to 45 days, they'll be caught up. And caught up means they'll have only 15 floors in front of them. And that's a reasonable number because of the velocity just going through the process. So I haven't seen it, but they promised us that they're going to have five more crews, and they told us it's going to cost us more money. And I have no idea what it's going to cost us, but I said, do it. We've got to get the houses done. We've got people waiting for them. They're all sold. We've got people waiting. So we'll see in the next week if we get another five crews out there.
Thank you for so much detail to my question. Through NACOG, I'm involved in workforce, you know, development issues, and I've really worried about all you developers knowing what you've been going through. So we have to have more young people becoming plumbers, electricians, and skilled workmen. And so, all your parents, tell them there's many ways to make a living. Okay, now I'll be quiet. Who would like to ask Mr. Contadino a question or make a comment? Michael?
Yeah, just one comment. I was interested in your demographics in terms of 50% of your customers come from Prescott, Prescott Valley. What is the other demographics? If you have a sense, you know, are they primarily retirement age people?
The demographic is pre-retirees and retirees. We'll get people that are coming here with jobs. We don't get, I'd say we get little to none of people coming here looking for a job. And they're, I don't know if I should say it on the record, why they're leaving California. We're getting bombarded with people out of California, and our demographics don't like what's going on in California. Young people maybe love it, but our demographics don't like it. And where we would normally run traffic counts of five people a week from California, the last six months, we averaged 25 a week. So it's just like off the charts.
That was actually reflected in our Citizen Academy, wasn't it?
It was.
Anyone else reached out?
Well, I did want to mention that I've talked to a few folks that are new to our community, and they've chosen Granville for whatever reason, so you should be happy about that after visiting the other master plan communities. So you're obviously doing something right.
I heard a comment from a Realtor. One of our salespeople asked a Realtor a couple of weeks ago, "Why'd you bring your customer here?" And he said, "Because we know you'll build our house." So that's really encouraging to hear.
That is very rewarding.
Really.
All right. Well, Joe, me and Kirk, we live in Granville. We've been there since 2007, and we absolutely love it. And, you know, a lot of people, as they see so much development going on right now, they also don't know that a lot of this was planned back in the late '90s. You know, what we're dealing with today was a plan long before, you know? And that just kind of goes back to what the town has called the general plan. As you make a vision going forward, it's really exciting to see the vision of the citizens come to life. And you know what? You live here in this community, and you have a heart in this community, and we appreciate that, Joe. You have just done an amazing job, and you have given people a wonderful place to live. And I look forward to the visions that we have going forward with you and in our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty?
Yeah, I mean, Granville, it's a beautiful community that you have there. I've had, I have several friends that live there. I don't, but anyway, the part that I really admire about Granville is the fact that you are the hands-on developer. You could very easily delegate a lot of what you do, but you're there. You know, you're reachable, you're approachable, and you handle the situations yourself, and I think that's great. So thank you for doing what you do, and we've still got a few more houses to build, don't we?
Thank you. One thing that you probably noticed is the park that's going on, the corner of Glassford Hill and Santa Fe Loop Road. To me, that's a focal point in the town. You know, the event center, the hospital, the town hall, but the traffic going by that corner is tremendous. And I approached Larry a while back, and I said, you know, "We need to fix this. This is ugly. It was originally supposed to be a golf course." And I said, "We need to fix it." So we got together, and we're now doing a park. We're doing the first phase, all the grading, water, sewer, the undergrounds, bathroom, the parking lot, and we're going to have a soccer field kind of be the focal point today. The town will be able to add facilities as it goes down the road. But we've been working on this for probably two years ago. Larry said, "Well, when can we be playing soccer?" You know, "Six months?" And it just takes time.
Well, we thank you for that, and I know the citizens will really look forward to it. Does anyone else have a question for Mr. Contadino?
Thank you.
Then we'll just say thank you again, and that information you gave us was very interesting and valuable.
It's a two-way street. I can't tell you, I've been doing this almost for 50 years now, and I've built communities all over the Southwest, some bigger than this, some smaller, but I've never been able to stay in one from beginning to end. And seeing it all come together, seeing the demographics of the town change, seeing the, you know, on my car counter, I always look at the cars, because those are the people that are in your town. And when we started 20 years ago, we were a lot of old pickup trucks with four different tires.
Yes, that's true.
And now, you know, the town is full of BMWs and Mercedes and Lexus and Porsches and everything. I go, "This is just awesome." So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Well, it's that point in time, yes. Thank you. I would welcome a motion in a second.
Mr. Vice, Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize the mayor in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign Resolution 2070, adopting and approving a final development plan plat, FDP 18-011, for Granville Unit 12.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. We're going to move right on to D, and aren't we happy?
That passes unanimously, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I was positive, wasn't I? I didn't even give you a chance to say it. Consideration of approving the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for drainage improvements to Sunset Lane. Hi, Norm.
Hi, Vice Mayor, Council. What you have before you is an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County Flood Control District. Council is probably familiar with this. We talked about this at work study last week, but yearly, we do the property tax here in Prescott Valley. There is a levy for stormwater and flood control projects. So this is the particular instrument that we can apply to projects. So this year's flood control IGA is for $600,000. It's going to be applied per our budget to the Sunset Lane project, which is slated for stormwater improvements. So you can see the exhibit you see above here. I think Council is well aware of the partnership that's been championed by supervisor Smith for this particular project. We've worked on this for the last year or two on the design. The design's complete, and currently you see utility relocations being put into place. Lots of work underground before we start even the roadway improvements. And we're actually in the process now, we talked last week, is staff is getting the temporary construction easements, because we have 50 feet of rideaway in existing homes. We have a lot of work to do to get temporary constructions, to build the improvements when we need to enter some of the private property for those adjacent improvements. So this particular project...
Excuse me, would you take that outside? Thank you. Sorry, I apologize, Norm.
No, no worries. So what is it, the partnership we talked about with Yavapai County, and we're moving forward with the utility relocations and the temporary construction easements. Where we are with project status, with what's this particular, just want to show a little bit, what will the stormwater improvements do? This exhibit you see up here, what I wanted to show you was the size of the pipe that's going to run this existing neighborhood in order to solve some of the stormwater management issues we have. But what you see up here is actually some of the size of the pipes. I want to point out, I think you might be aware of the Pine View Drive. There's an existing ditch behind the coals and the fries. We're going to take some of that stormwater and move it to that particular ditch. Actually, there's going to be two 54-inch diameter pipes in this particular section from Starlight to Pine View. Those pipes, you know, doggone, they're my height, twin 54-inch pipes. That's what's going to help manage that stormwater. And likewise, what this money goes towards also is going the other direction from Starlight towards Prescott East Highway. There's a box covert that will be upsized to, where's the size up there? A 10-foot by 4-foot box covert, twin barrel box covert, and the large storm drain pipe. Equally, you see a 60-inch storm drain pipe going in there, right down the middle of the road. So that's what this particular money will go for. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any further questions that Council may have, but this is, we, timeline, once we get some of the utilities relocated, we're looking at, hopefully, if all goes well with utility relocation on schedule, and also the temporary construction easements, we're looking to bid the project after the first year and hopefully get started in the spring if all goes well. And aggregately, the roadway with some of the utility relocations we have and the storm drain improvements will be $7.4 million. Storm drain improvements will be in the neighborhood of $1.2 million.
There's a little simple about this project.
It's going to be a fun one, but it'll be a significant improvement. And the biggest thing, I always like every chance I get with Council is, keep in mind, a lot of the work you see done, there's as much investment underground with all the utility relocations, with storm drain being one of the utilities, everybody is upsizing due to the growth of Prescott Valley. This is a significant corridor for what we would call, you know, transmission mains to for utilities, whether it be gas, Arizona Public Service, telco, all the particular utilities.
Well, it's urgently needed, and I am really enjoying the attention to detail that's taking place. Okay? Mary, did you have a statement or a question?
No, Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if we're ready.
Let's see if any one else has a question. Everybody?
I have a quick question. How much of a disruption, once the project starts, how much of a disruption to traffic will it be, and for how long?
It's, I heard the comment, it will be a significant disruption. Nice thing is, we've had a couple of public meetings during the design. We've had public weigh-in. Every chance we get, we tell people, "You're going to know we're there." So yes, there's going to be detour routes. The nice thing about this neighborhood, you can see some of the parallel streets. There's going to be significant detours in order to do the work, because obviously, when I talk about twin 54-inch diameter pipes, you're not going to be able to put that pipe in without detouring traffic around it. It would be unsafe. So it's going to be about a year worth of detours. Every time we have a national night out, or I get the opportunity to speak, or Public Works staff, we tell them, "Stay with us. It's going to be a nice improvement, but you're going to know we're there, and it's going to be up to a year. Find another route. You know the neighborhood well." To answer your question, yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, the really nice thing, and for the public to know, is the fact that the community and the people that are going to be most affected by this have always been kept in the loop. And, you know, you've always been out there. Jack Smith and his department have always been out there, because it is a community. It's a partnership that we're doing this with them. And the information has always been out there, so no one is, you know, it's, when we do start the work, it's not going to be, "Oh, I didn't know you were going to do this." No, the word's been out, and you've been very easy to get in touch with regarding this project. And I'm looking forward to the completion of it, I'm sure as you are as well, and the people in the community. So thanks for doing as well as you are. Thank you.
That's a good comment, Councilman Grossman. Keep in mind, this temporary construction, we meet personally with each individual property owner. There are 66 that front it. That's where we can talk about the improvements, what they expect, and how we're going to match the new improvements best we can to the existing homeowners landscaping and improvements and driveway matches. So still a lot of work to do in the coming months before we even start construction. Get those partnerships with the adjacent property owners is real important to us, because that's what makes the construction go very well, is when you get their buy-in, and they know what to expect, and we'll do all we can to minimize any particular impact.
I believe we're ready for Mary's motion.
Okay, Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for drainage improvements to Sunset Lane. I'll second that.
Now, I know the mayor always says, "Call for the motion," but Diane's always on it. So I didn't do that.
That passes unanimously, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council.
All right. Councilman Anderson has agreed to read the comments from the public for me.
Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the Vice Mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the Vice Mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter, or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda.
Thank you. Come right on up. You've been here before, so you know the routine. Give us your name first. So Diane has it for the record.
Bill Fireobin. Okay? And it's just actually a compliment tonight, two things. One is, I firmly believe that towns are like homes, and you can look at some homes, and it's obvious the owner doesn't give a rip how they present themselves to the public. And it's the same thing with towns. There are towns you can go through, and it's obvious nobody in the town gives a rip how they present themselves to the public. And other towns really do. And I have just two things going on right at the moment. In my neighborhood, there's Chip Seal, and I, you know, I appreciate seeing you guys maintaining your infrastructure. And then the other one is Bob Edwards Park. When I, I quite often do a daily walk, and my intermediate walk, I end up going around Bob Edwards Park. When I drove by tonight, there's a big soccer game and cars everywhere, but I'm not talking specific events. What I'm talking about is just day in, day out, hour by hour. I've been there as early as 5:00 a.m., and there's somebody walking. You know, 8:00 o'clock in the morning, there's people out there. I think there's only one time I've been by there, one Sunday at 7:00 a.m., I was the only person in the park. And anytime from 5:00 a.m. on, there's people walking, walking their dogs, saying hi. You know, I kind of grew up, I think years ago, it seemed like people didn't use parks. So it's really impressed me. You guys built Bob Edwards, you know, "Build it, and they will come." And they have, and it's just, the park, and, you know, it's morning walks. Sometimes I'm very grateful you guys have got the bathroom that's open, you know, it's clean, functioning. You know, the park's there. It's being used. Just, I don't know what, I assume at 2:30 in the morning, there's nobody there. I don't know, but, you know, from 5:00 a.m. on, I can guarantee you, virtually every time I've been there, there's been one or often multiple people walking around, walking their dogs, just doing something, enjoying it. So that I just take a few minutes and give you appreciation that, you know, I think you guys, in the big scale, are doing something right. You're improving the town. You care how it looks. And granted, that's not for free, but, you know, I'm willing to, I'm certainly willing to pay the price when it, to be part of a town that cares how it presents itself. And that's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you. That was very refreshing.
No complaints this time.
Come on up.
Glenn Brower. I'm happy to say I finished my second session of the Citizen Academy, and I want to repeat some, a statement that Larry made. He says, "If you have any hard questions, you need to bring them..." He says, "If you have any hard questions, you need to bring them forth." I have some questions. Looking at the agenda, the consent agenda and your procedures of doing it is, is a wonderful idea. The things that are concerning me was the question on item number J, approving a change order number three to construction contact for the, I guess it's for the police department? Is this a blank check? I don't see no what dollar amount at all. Number R, approving change order number two for contract for annual chip seal program for $26,000. I hope you council members remember that change order number one was for $41,000 and change. This is change order number two for $26,000. So we're looking at $68,000 in change orders for chip seal. Now, this chip seal went to the low bidder. We all know that who's been in construction, what the low bidder, what that means. And we all know what change orders mean. We have a different value and cost for a competitive bid versus a change order. Now, now that we see that, we know that change orders, or we should know that changes are really initiated by the contractor. Now, it's either the bidding instructions were not accurate enough, or there were unseen things that had developed on the job during the job, during the process.
Okay, let me stop you right there, 'cause you got it. You got it. There was unseen.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood that we do understand.
Okay.
You've got added quantities going.
We carefully studied this, as I explained before in our work study. And that's the only reason it could go on the consent agendas, because we had studied it, and we had full explanations on a lot of questions.
Okay, that's, that answers that question. So my next question is that, in other states, how they operate with a change order, that they cannot exceed a percentage of the original bid. Now, I don't know what's in the town code, but I haven't got into that. But I know Larry or the legal attorney would know that in their bidding process, a change order cannot exceed a certain percent of the original bid in some entities. Now, is that practical here or not? No.
That is not. And the other thing is, you got added quantities. So in other words, we got more. We stretched our dollars more. We already have had mobilization in, okay? While you have that contractor there, if you have additional dollars, guess what? We wanna improve roads, so we stretch it as far as we can. And so if we have the flexibility to add to the contract, we'll certainly do it. And that's what you're looking at. It's a good thing.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. But, but I, being a contractor, I know what change orders are. And we all should know that as a fact.
We do. We're trained in all of that.
Right, exactly.
Believe me, we went through plenty of work study to understand it.
Now, there's other things that I see, addendums. Now, the difference between a change order and addendum? You have a couple of addendums on unit, item number U and item number V. Now, is that addendum a change of the original proposal? Is that what that means?
Glenn, if, if you'd like to set up a time where you can come to the office, we can sit down and go through it line by line if you elect, but it's not appropriate now.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Okay, thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council, staff. I know we all wanna leave, but I just wanted to say publicly, it was a historical election year, and we're gonna see change as the town is growing and demands are being made. But I just wanna thank you again for allowing me to sit here freely and learn and be part of your process, and learn the important questions, and know that you do have an open-door policy. I hear grumbles on the streets, rumors, they concern me. But this is where you come, to get those answers freely, openly. And I just wanna thank each and every one of you for making me very proud to live in this town. And I go out every day and try to amplify that in my own nature. Wherever I may travel, I'm proud to come back here to each and every one of you and have my questions answered. So I just wanna thank you. It was a long meeting. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
We have anyone else that wishes to come up? Come right on up. Just give us your name first.
My first name is Attilano, last name is Olivas.
Thank you.
Nice seeing all you guys here. Larry, I've talked to you before.
Would you pull the microphone down so that our TV audience can hear you? Thank you.
My problem is, right now, the light to address is, when I moved in to Prescott Valley in 2011, my insurance, my homeowners and my automobile insurance went down. Just recently, this month, I had to do a renewal. It was shocking. AAA went up twenty-two percent. Allstate went up twenty-eight percent, mainly on automobile. The explanation was, I have a good driving record. No accidents, no speeding tickets. Explanation is that the cost of automobile claims and traffic accidents have increased dramatically in Prescott Valley, not in Prescott. So be aware that a lot of people are gonna get hit. My insurance went up $586. The idea of doing chip seal, gosh, it's costly to the citizens. Every windshield that I've had on new vehicles, five months, six months, I've had to repair or replace. There must be another process to fix roads than not using chip seal, another technique. It might be economical for the city, but not for us as a consumer. We're getting hit. We've got a problem. Okay? It tears up the vehicles, the paint job, and the windshields. It creates a cleaning hazard. You ought to see my driveway. So I ask you guys to pay, please pay attention to this. We need your help on this. An increase like that on homeowners' automobile insurance, mainly on automobile insurance, is tremendous, especially now as retirees that aren't a fixing them. Problems like Lake Shore Drive and Navajo. We need a traffic circle there. It's called a speed bump. We've had fatalities there. We need help in those situations. Seems to be that speed bumps, which City of Chino and other cities are using more and more are preventative on over speeding or running stoplights. They're safer. So I'm looking to that. Help us out there, bring our insurance rates down where we can afford to have insurance and drive. I thank you guys.
Okay, is there anyone else? Again, thank you all for coming, and I would accept a motion and second for adjournment.
Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second.
That passes unanimously, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. The meeting is officially adjourned.